These aren't on yet, are they? Alright, can everybody take their seats, please? Alright, we'll restart the remainder of public comment. Anybody that has not spoken so far that wants to speak? No need to run.
New shoes.
Okay, any further public comment? Okay. Seeing none. Does anybody have further questions for staff? Or the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, Nigel?
Want me to go first? Thank you. Well, first-
Maybe it may be better just to have the applicant do their rebuttal-
Rebuttal? Okay.
Even better?
And then I have just a few remarks I can make, but I'll let the applicant go first with their rebuttal.
Okay.
If you'd like to.
My understanding is you're gonna give us some feedback to consider between now and second reading. So I'm just gonna make some very brief comments and save some of the other comments for the second reading. But what I really think is important to understand is that this property- This property has always been zoned commercial. When Jesse and his wife bought their property, this property has always been zoned commercial property. It always could have a restaurant on it. And then when you rezoned it to the overlay, it's still commercial and could still have a restaurant on it. So to come up here and almost act surprised that there's going to be a restaurant on this piece of property is not factually what has always been permitted to occur on this property. We welcome your feedback as to what revisions you'd like to see to the proposed project between now and second reading. The transient- the transient slips will be transient slips. I'm sorry that they have bad neighbors that are illegally renting out their docks. That does not make my client a bad person. To just assume my client is gonna misbehave and not honor the commitments they made in the PD is unfair, and we're not the boogeyman. We will honor every commitment we make in this PD document. We will be a good neighbor. The revisions we've made to the staff recommendations since we got them have been reasonable changes. Don't forget, your staff's recommending approval. Don't forget that your transportation professional agrees with our transportation professional, that this will operate properly on Benita Beach Road. You have not heard a single testimony from a qualified professional traffic engineer rebutting what the professional testimony is. We will properly design this. With regard to the music, staff was fine whether our piping the music out towards the residences subject to the noise ordinance. We suggested it might be better to actually have the music go the other direction. Towards, away from the residences, subject to our being able to verify with a professional sound engineer that in fact, we will not violate the noise ordinance. That's why we put that in there, because we think it's better to have the music go away from the residences instead of towards the residences. That's where that revision came from. We never said, we never said we weren't gonna have outdoor music. We never said that. This is a good project. My clients are good people. Sorry, I got a head cold, so I may be yelling and I don't even know if I am. If I am, I apologize. So, we welcome your comments, we welcome your feedback. Staff's recommending approval, your planning board recommended approval, your LPA recommended approval. This property has always been zoned commercial, and we're trying to develop it according to your land development code to the best of our ability. I don't think anybody could say this is not a unique piece of property from a shape standpoint. And don't be fooled into thinking that if you turn this down, that that piece that we're talking about on the growth management plan change or comprehensive plan change, it will be developed. It will be developed regardless of how this moves. That piece of property is zoned for commercial uses. So it has a right to be developed. We will meet all the code requirements. That is not gonna remain a vacant piece of property. And I think that was important to your zoning board. They understood that this entire piece of property has the right to be developed as commercial uses. And we welcome your feedback. And that's all I have for rebuttal at this point. Thank you.
Any questions? Nigel?
Go first. Well, first of all, I appreciate both sides being civil this evening. I'm not sure that some of us thought that was gonna be the case, so thank all of you that are here. I have several comments. Longtime resident, been down there. I was actually friends with Mike Bodie. I can say that I've raised a glass with him, or raised a glass with him more times than I probably should have. Mike wouldn't have recognized this, but, and this is not the Bakersfield Grill. This is something very different. It looks amazing. That's number one. I think the design is nice and all of that, but my concerns are threefold. One is the number of residential units. Are those going to be short-term rentals? Please?
No, those are not short-term rentals. The intention initially was for them to be worker housing. Unfortunately, with only being able to do six units, they're gonna be a little larger than what workers can afford, so they'll be apartments. But they will not be short-term rentals.
Long-term?
Yes.
Much like we did with, you're familiar with Bamboo Village? We did with, well, that's city property, but Barron Collier.
Right, yes.
Okay, so-
Right, yes.
That's asked and answered, thank you.
You're welcome.
Second thing is, I don't have a problem so much with the boat slips that are up by the restaurant. I'm concerned with the ones that are down on the east end of the property. It shows us 10 or 12. Somebody said seven. But again, that traffic down there, I know you're not gonna rent them out. I think that you all shouldn't be thinking they're gonna be renting. That wouldn't be allowed. They'd have a problem with the city. So I don't see that problem. What I have a problem is with how that's gonna be used, how much traffic will be down that end of the canal in the evenings. Yes, there's a lot of responsible boaters, but we have just one or two idiots that boat in our waters here, and I'm sure they'll find their way down there. And we've got people, that's their home, that canal's it. I want to be proactive on this project, not reactive. I can see Tony's hiding in the back down there. His code enforcement people don't wanna be down on Benita Beach Road seven days a week trying to enforce problems that we could deal with right now. So I've got a problem with how do you deal with that. And last thing is, somebody mentioned the word precedent, and that's it. We made the folks that did rooftop and Sugar Shack jump through hoops. I think a lot of people thought there's no way that they're gonna make two places that offer entertainment soundproof, but by God, they did it. They spent a lot of money and designed it. They're a credit to the community. You can go two blocks on the other side of Sugar Shack, and they've got music going, and you can't hear it. It can be done, but that's gonna be a big issue. And you said pointing the music away from the residences? I'm not an engineer, but if that's something that's being looked at, that would be proactive, and I would be all for that.
Yeah, and that's our intention, is to prove to the city beforehand that it will not be a noise problem.
Well, if we, again, setting the precedent. If we do it, if we make somebody else jump through hoops, and so they say, well, you guys are gonna make an exception. To your point, there's another property waiting to be developed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Laura?
Well, I agree this property will be developed, and it would be wonderful to be developed by somebody, a family that is dedicated to the charm and the history of Benita Springs. But it's sort of like a first draft that needs a really good edit. And one would be fast food restaurant in and out. It's just calling for disaster, and I could never support a fast food restaurant being on the property. I love the restaurant, and would love Tracy and Mike to be back in business. I mean, I too visited the restaurant down on the corner of Hickory Boulevard. But it just needs to be kind of really edited. And then I would be more inclined to think about it. But we have to deal with the noise, and you do the decimal from the property point. Now, you're saying we'll do, if you do like how Sugar Shack did its sound system, it works. You really can hear it. But if you do the decimal reading from the Hickory side, Hickory Bay side, what about the house across the street? Will you do a decimal reading over there? And, you know-
Across Benita Beach Road?
No, across the bay. The water carries-
I got, when you said "street," that's where I got a little, I got confused.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
Amen and posel, blah blah. Okay, so, but no, like a property across the bay, or across the canal. Do a reading over there, you know, when you play your music, and then adjust it accordingly.
If we exceed the decimal levels leaving the site, then I'm sure we would exceed the decimal levels at their property. So we'd have to-
Water does carry music, I mean, it really does.
I don't doubt that it carries it. I'm not sure that it necessarily makes it louder than what it left.
Oh, it does.
Well, I'll have, I will admit I'm not a sound engineer.
Neither am I, but I'll-
We'll have our sound engineer address that.
Any other questions? Chris?
I think basically it comes down to whether or not, step one, is this a plan that is consistent in most regards with respect to the comprehensive plan. That in and of itself is sort of a legislative decision. And so I don't, since the property's been commercial all this time, you know, I don't see this as a major deviation from what we as a city have been trying to accomplish with our comprehensive plan. I will also notice note that, you know, right across the street is Collier County, which operates in as a, you know, their plan along Benita Beach Road with a lot more leniency than we've been willing to do in Benita Springs. And I hate to see property owners in Benita Springs penalized by businesses that have an advantage. And so I'm perfectly willing to support the comprehensive plan amendment. I think the suggestions that staff is making and are further negotiating with the applicant with respect to changes to the design, whether it's noise or whatever, you know, that'll get worked out before second reading. So I have no problem with making the move to bring this to second reading at whatever point the applicant and staff believe they have reached an agreement. I think the 37 boat slips is simply probably a way to try to reduce the overall number of parking places on the site. So if we could come to an agreement that 194, or whatever the number is, of parking places is a little bit ridiculous as far as the comprehensive plan, you know, we could probably negotiate down the number of boating sites. I mean, I go up to Doc Ford's and there's not, you know, which is right on the Estero Bay and the Man Tansas Bridge. I mean, I've never seen 37 boats up there. So I think the 37 is probably some sort of way to try to get around the parking restrictions. I think we do need to look at our parking restrictions. So that's my thoughts on it.
Derek, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to just procedurally let everyone know where we are. So this is a small-scale plan amendment and the PD first reading. So because it's small scale, you're not voting on a transmittal, so there's no vote that needs to be taken today. But before we leave, if there's any additional comments, this would be the opportunity for the council to provide direction to staff to follow up with additional conditions that may be addressed in the PD portion. That said, the comp plan amendment, when you come back, that'll be an up or down vote based on legislative priority of the council. But the PD, if the comp plan is approved, and I will recommend for the second hearing that we break them out into two separate hearings. And so that, I, there was a lot of crossover between the two hearings, and there was a lot of confusion, and there was some confusion I didn't expect from both the public and with the council. So I think for the next hearing, the part with respect to whether to change the property from the multifamily residential to commercial, that will be one hearing. You'll have four minutes to speak on that issue. The plan development will be secondary, and that will be the more specific, that'll be the more grandial discussion about the conditions and otherwise. So I think that would just be easier for everyone, and I'll do a reminder when we get to that point for everyone to keep their comments related to each one. For the latter, for the PD, they will have to be compositional evidence because it is a quasi-judicial hearing, whereas the former will be a legislative discussion.
So the zoning resolution's treated just like a first reading? We're not gonna vote on that at all tonight?
The zoning ordinance, yeah, it would just be first reading.
Jim?
Yeah, I didn't want to lose the point. We talked a lot about music here for the last five or 10 minutes or so. The key concern about the residents across the canal in terms of lighting and whether the mangrove would sufficiently protect that. I'd like to see something in there that protects that. Now, whether that's addition of an additional decorative screen, like you've done along the front. Just, I don't wanna lose sight of the headlights and stuff like that.
Is that in the event that it turns out that the mangroves are not sufficiently dense enough? The safety mechanism would be-
There was, in terms of issues heard-
Right.
From the residents. You had the noise factor, you had the traffic on Benita Beach Road. And the third component for the residents across the canal-
Lighting.
Specifically was to lights late at night and that type of thing. And so, do you build it into your design that that decorative barrier is in? Or do you go ahead and just wait until afterwards? I don't know. Whatever the appropriate timing of that is, I just don't wanna lose sight of that issue.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what Jim said. I have concerns too about the boats. I'm an avid boater, but seeing that much boat traffic in there, to me, is concerning. I mean, I've gone up to Fort Myers there, to Man Tansas, and they do have some in there helping boats coming in and out. But there's a lot, I feel like, more room of people moving around, and it still ends up being chaos a lot. So that's concerning. And the traffic valet, are you gonna have, I know there's, looks like there's two points there. Are you gonna have two separate valets? Is it just gonna be one running it all over? What about the residence parking? You had six residents, where is there-
If you notice, there's substantial portions of the parking-
There's a lot of parking.
That's not, that's not related to the valet.
Right.
So that would be available to the six residential units and the other businesses.
And I agree with what Chris said. That does seem substantial, but I know we need to look. I just think there's a lot of things that need to be looked at that we've all stressed, concerned about tonight.
Jesse?
I think the slips parking thing, I think, is a larger holistic issue that we need to look at as a council. Because I feel like we're in this back and forth about the slips and the spots because we have something that, the idea of 190 is silly. I mean, that's not even, I don't think any of us up here are like, no, 190 is, that's right. I don't think that passes the sniff test. So I think this is an attempt for them to work around the rules that we have in place, but the real core issue is our rules, not really how they're trying to get around it. So I can't even hold it against them for trying to make it work because this is how we have it set up. So, you know, it's a decent amount to think about, and I think, I'm looking forward to them having discussions with staff and coming to the next reading.
Michael, I did have one other point. And that was, when I looked at the parking plan and that you were carving out in the turnaround in front of the restaurant as designated valet, because of our chronologically mature residents, will there be sufficient handicap parking there?
Yes, we will. Yes.
Okay.
So to reiterate my concerns, definitely the parking headlights should be screened. I don't know how we work that in, whether you put the knee wall in off the bat, or if it doesn't, you know, adequately lock it, then you have to do it then. And then what is the end time for the music?
I-
10 o'clock.
Tony's still here?
Well, for them, I mean.
Oh.
I know-
Outdoor, Sunday through Thursday. Outdoor activity whatsoever ends at 9:30. And then on, so that's the seating and everything. Excuse me, and then on Friday and Saturday, it's 10 p.m.
And that's under the allowable use?
Yeah, that's what your noise ordinance currently allows.
Would you guys be amenable to reducing that on the Sunday through Thursday? The music portion at least, to an earlier time?
That's something we can obviously go back and talk about. We understand that comment.
And then I know, also in the past, I think it was Lansdowne, we had a stipulation in there that in a year's time, we looked, you know, we gave you a conditional approval on the music outside, but within a year's time, it had to come back in just to address it again, to make sure everything's working alright. And also, like a three strikes, you have to come back in. So if there's three, not complaints, but actual violations, that it comes back in before you-
I think that's something that's fair, that they be actual violations. Because, no disrespect to our neighbors, I think that they may complain more than there really are violations.
Okay. Right, does, oh, yes, I just, okay, Jesse?
Real quick, I like some of the things you said. So like the idea of a three-strike and/or a reevaluation after a year. What I don't like, I don't like preemptively penalizing them before there's an issue. So for us to be like, alright, you're already allowed 10. They're like, no, we're gonna go at 9:30. And we're like, no, you're gonna go at 8. They didn't even do anything yet. So it's like, if there's a problem, then you reel in the rights that they have. But currently, they have the rights, they haven't. I think, I'm a firm believer, give them the opportunity to mess up before we take them to the woodshed. So like snipping them right off the top before they even get out of the gate, for why?
Okay. Does staff have any comments on, okay. All right. Okay, so there's no vote on this, and we'll see everybody in, is it two weeks on it, or is it further out?
Well, currently it's scheduled for the 17th, but we need to, we got a lot of feedback, so we may need to push that back if we can't get it done in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we are on to consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. We have a roll call.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
All right, any comment on the consent agenda? All right. Public hearings.
This is the first, this is the first reading.
Okay, Mike.
Go ahead. This is the first reading of an ordinance establishing Vivid Shores Community Development District pursuant to Section 190.005, subsection 2, Florida statutes, providing for the establishment of the Community Development District, describing the external boundaries of the district, naming the initial members of the Board of Supervisors, naming the district, providing that the city of Benita Springs may not and shall not modify or delete any provision of the district charter set forth in Sections 190.006 through 190.041, Florida statutes, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
All right.
Motion to approve.
No, it's first reading.
Second reading.
Yeah, just for purposes of what this is, and the team from Pulte here, this is the CDD that's being set up over the BG Mine Development. And so now you know the name of the project. If you have any additional questions specific to CDD creation, anything like that, let me know ahead of time. We'll make sure that they're prepared to address that when we get to the second reading.
Okay.
Staff have any comments or anything on this?
It is still a public-
And is there a public comment on it? Any public comment?
Move to second reading.
We don't have to move it. You're gonna go. All right, we're moving on to city manager items.
Thank you. On, we should have available remotely is the city's lobbyist.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. So just a reminder, we had placed on the last agenda a request for some discussion regarding our legislative priorities. We were given feedback concerning an emergency, the Emergency Response Center, which is in essence the old library, Paradise Road, and the Aquatic Center, which is the rebuild of the pool. Additionally, I just wanted to make you all aware that Senator Martin's office has reached out to staff to set a meeting prior to the Lee County delegation meeting. The mayor, myself, and the assistant city manager will be meeting with Senator Martin's office prior to. They would like to hear some feedback from us on any legislative priorities, as well as he did leave it open to any concerns, questions, or any other items that we'd like to bring up regarding the city at that time. He has also offered, in essence of sunshine, if there's any additional council members who would like an individual meeting with his office, that we can schedule that as well, and you can decide if you would like staff to be a part of that as well. We do know for sure now that the Lee County delegation meeting will be held October 28th. Typically, the mayor, myself, and the assistant manager attend that meeting. It's basically about 30 seconds to introduce the city, thank the delegation for their support, their previous support of the projects we have funding for, and then present very briefly the next asks. So that's the direction we're going. We would start preparing draft write-ups on those, but we're still collecting any additional items. And then we'd probably like to begin to wrap up our requests by the next meeting, no later than the first meeting in October, so that we can have a package ready to provide to the delegation. And that allows him to add anything else he's hearing or any other issues he wishes to update council on.
Sure, and thanks, Arlene, and thanks, Mayor and council. Appreciate the opportunity. I think Arlene kinda covered where we are pretty well. You know, the legislative bill drafting opened about two weeks ago. The House has released their appropriations forms, which I believe have been sent over. The Senate has not released their appropriations forms. So right now, you know, prioritizing and planning, making your best choice of projects and communicating with your local delegation as you're doing is exactly what you need to do. You know, there has been, there have been projections that there's a possibility of a little bit of a budget reduction, particularly in GR in the coming session. That being said, all of our monthly collections have exceeded the projections. And so at the end of the day, perhaps we come out a little better than thought. Even if we do come out better than thought, than we thought, I would not expect for the legislature to spend much differently than they did last year. There is, there are still some unresolved budgetary issues from last year, not the least of which- least of which is the potential property tax discussion that could go on. The House has announced further meetings of their select committee on property taxes. Actually, just today, they announced meetings on the twenty-second and twenty-third of this month. They've released no documents to go along with that, so that's just an ongoing discussion that will certainly impact the budget discussion and any appropriations process in 2026.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our meeting with the senator is September 24th, so we would want to have an idea of the finalized legislative priorities when we attend that meeting. Additionally, staff will be reaching out to, with the help of our lobbyist, Representative Botana's office, and setting up a similar meeting as we did with Senator Martin's office.
Chris?
Yeah, you know, we were successful in getting critical erosion designation for Benita Beach. And even though all the work took place last winter, was completed in March on Benita Beach, it's in pretty rough shape now. So one of the legislative priorities I'd like to see us, see the take on would be not necessarily a restoration at this point, but coming up with a plan of how we're going to maintain Benita Beach going forward. You know, is there an engineering that needs to be done? Is there another plan that has to be put in place? And so I would like to add that to sort of the legislative priorities because Benita Beach is one of the most important tourism destinations for Benita Springs. So how do we fix Benita Beach for at least two or three years so it can be routinely maintained and re-nourished? So...
So a recommendation might be, just as you had done the Burt project, because it wasn't a specific number of an allocation, it could become a legislative priority.
Right.
Is, so that we keep it in their, in the minds. And then when the opportunity for a specific appropriation happens, it's already been a part of the priority list that you have.
Because otherwise, we're gonna, we would probably, unless we can move it along, we're probably looking at three to five years to work its way up the chain before it gets re-nourished again. I'd like to see if we can somehow fix that so that the beach is in better shape.
I like the spirit of what you're saying on that. I think having it as one of the priorities is good, but at the same time, if, if we don't make it tangible, if it isn't attached to something that's going to be like, hey, we need to do a study and there's going to be a price, if there isn't an actual fiscal component attached to it, it's going to be much like, it's much like Burt was viewed by the legislators. It's like, okay, sir, we hear you, but there's no actual ask from us, so we're not asking, okay, we need $2 million for a study that's going to be able to whatever, but I think we have to kind of get a little more granular. If we want, if we want it to be more than window dressing, we have to make it more granular and there has to be an actual ask, I think, in my opinion.
You're probably right, so. I don't know, any idea, Matt?
It's a very complicated subject matter. There's 140 property owners that have deeds that have not granted permanent easements. So I think to ask is a little premature, in my opinion, that maybe what you're asking us to do is to frame some sort of project to approach those property owners, because I think until you have that, or a study that you could use to approach them, because...
The problem is, is that portions of Benita Beach right now are pretty dangerous, because we have, what's happened is water has cut ditches into the beach, and you're going to get people hurt.
No, we understand, but, but when we did the, the re-nourishment on South Benita, we had to get a three-year easement, ended up being five for the project timeframe for turtle monitoring, but there are property rights along that corridor that do not have easements that would allow a project like that. So to, to get to that, that point, I think you need some, some heavy lifting on the development of a project and working with those property owners to be able to, to get to a tangible project, re-nourishment type project.
I'm sure of the 865 miles that the state has designated critical, they've addressed that problem, so...
No, it's actually an issue up in Pinellas County right now. It's been, it's been in the news where they're, they're having the same issue.
And they're going to get slammed for it. They're gonna, you know, it's gonna wake up one morning and they're gonna find their beach has been re-nourished.
Nigel?
So just more strategy than anything else, we're still under a state of emergency, correct?
We are, correct. Currently, we are.
So just, do we have any latitude or leeway there? You've got 100 and, how many homes, 140 homes that are, have failed to respond?
The problem is they're not going to respond because they don't...
Or they have responded.
Right.
Or they've responded and that's not going to happen, so it's like...
But we're under state emergency and Chris just brought the point that we have now a life, safety, health issue. Can we tackle it that way?
Matt?
I don't want to overspeak. All I'm explaining is a typical re-nourishment project has long-term easements that are garnered by the property owners. In the case of South Benita, you do not have that situation. We had easements that are tied to a turtle monitoring requirement to address the damage that we experienced during the two storms. But if, if you're talking about a re-nourishment program like, like we have on North Benita or, or anywhere else within the county, there's a longer-term easement where, where, you know, you work with the property owners and you get those easements so that you can develop a project like that through permitting and through construction.
I appreciate that explanation because I, I knew there was more to it. It seemed too simple of a problem to fix, but this is why we have you guys. I mean, that's, that is a very problematic...
I'm not saying it's not possible. I just think maybe a different approach that could lead you to work with those property owners to be able to develop it, it takes time.
No, that's fine.
Best tactful approach.
That's, that's tactic.
Can we fix it without litigation?
That's the approach.
If we take, if we try to take all the easements and say we're going to do it for emergency reasons, we're getting sued to oblivion. Because you got to think about where these people are too. It's not like we're trying to do construction on Rosemary Drive and people are like, oh, I don't know, they're not, we're talking Little Hickory area, you think those people will sue us?
So maybe the ask with the designation is to, you know, the legislature would be to develop, you know, kind of those next steps. I would need to make some calls, you know, obviously those things have happened in Lee County. That's how we have the re-nourishment projects we do to the north of us, but I, I think maybe your request would be for, for whatever that next step is, to, to work with those property owners to convey the urgency and the need and...
And that would be very appropriate as a legislative priority where we can request the state's assistance on developing the next steps and practices and being a partner with us and the intervention of that plan, so that when we're going to those property owners, we already have those steps in place.
I agree.
So I'll tell you that a couple of years ago, it was also Hurricane Hermine up in Sarasota County, Minnesota Key. There were several holdout property homes. Those homes went into the ocean.
Huh.
Yeah.
And the state went through similar functions. The two counties worked on it, trying if they couldn't get access to it or the property owners weren't willing to give public access in exchange for tax dollars being used. The result was the homes were lost.
So it's a good idea to have state behind us, because I think some of the folks that are resisting worry that somehow they're not going to get their property rights back.
It's, it's just that I think you need a more methodical approach to engage the property owners, to, to be able to get a project that ultimately ends up being a re-nourishment project that, that comes back. For example, at North Benita, you know, that project is established. It is through cooperation with Lee County and the state, and it comes every 10 years.
Nick? Yeah. Tim, did you have anything else to add?
Not really. I mean, we could certainly help engage with DEP. Sorry, there's a motorcycle gang outside my office. The, uh...
Do you need us to send help?
The, uh, of course.
It is tough, honestly.
We can help engage with DEP here, see if they have any strategies that they've assisted local governments in hatching with property owners. I, I tend to agree that, you know, if, if there are holdouts that are going to complicate the funds being mobilized, you know, that, that will make both the legislature and DEP hesitant to make the investment, you know, because they want to get the, the money dispersed and spent on whatever project category it is. And if they kind of view that, you know, there's more steps to be taken, that, that will impact their decision-making.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
Undergrounding of FPNL along Benita Beach Road from like 41 to the beach, is that something we can look at putting on there?
How about Old 41?
We put money away, we did put, I think we put a placeholder for 100 grand as a starting point so we could have this discussion actually during the budget.
I can, we would want to address it as storm hardening is probably how to address that, so I'll make a note to add that to, from what, what is the, what would be this?
From where to where?
Yeah, I just want to make sure where you...
Well, I mean, as much of Benita Beach Road as we can get, but at a minimum from 41 to...
And I would include, if we're doing underground, if we're doing underground, I would include the Barney soccer fields, under 75, over 75, same, same type of deal. And instead of, you know, on top of, you know, you have kids playing under electric, high voltage electrical lines, and every city brings their families here and they see porta potties and high electrical lines and they think that's what Benita is. And they're seeing it from the freeway. So just from an optical standpoint, getting that two football fields underground could really help give us an appropriate facelift for the rest of the community.
And then if, if council's comfortable, staff... But Arlene, you did get Old 41. We spent so much money in the entrance, it's horrible. You know, we need to repave and get Old 41 from Benita Beach Road matching what we spent $35 million on with regard to the streets.
Are you talking about the other side of the roundabout, you mean? Like the other side of 41?
No, no, like Benita Beach Road and Old 41 where, oh, you know...
Waffle Monkey and all that is?
Right, that corner there. And then put plants in front of the, I'll even do it, in front of that gas station, just so that the entrance, because we're putting a sign up there, correct? Welcome to Benita is going to go at Old 41.
Are you talking about these for, for the legislature in general? Because the conversation, we talked about three specific projects that are in our capital improvement plan. And now we're talking about, then we started talking about the beach, which was a more broader ask of the legislature. Are you talking about something more broad or something that's in our CIP? Because some of these are not, and I just want to clarify that.
Well, is Old 41 and Benita Beach Road in our CIP?
The PD and E study and the, it's listed as Old 41 Quadrant Road is in our CIP, which is tied to the PD and E study that FDOT is doing. Beyond that, I don't believe there's anything along the lines of beautification like you're speaking of, other than our signage plan, which obviously has signs.
I, I was just bringing up from 41 to the beach, because I know we'd have an ally in Representative Botana. I, I know that's something he's been asking for too, so.
Shock.
He would support the beach as well.
Also, we should consider, we have to re-engage the conversation, but with Herner in regards to Benita Beach Road and Imperial at the site of the gravesite, where we talked about having the water and the flags and all that stuff so that people's first stop in Benita and they aren't looking at the, a dilapidated graveyard and a billboard. So it was, it was, we had the discussion initially in buying out the billboard and we had initial renderings of what that would look like, but I think we need to re-engage with the county, put pen to paper on a cost for that, and maybe we can roll that into an actual ask. And that's a 50, that's a, the county split and the city split, because they have one of the roads and we have one of the roads, and then we go to the state for it, and the state, you know, Botana gets a BOGO for giving the county and the city a project in one project. So if we can price that and actually get pen to paper on that, that could be one that would probably be not that expensive and he'd be able to help both the county and the city in regards to an appropriation.
When do we need to whittle these down? At the next meeting?
Yeah, the next meeting. But what, what I think we could do is we have a, we've got a couple of different options. Let us, let us look through what we have here, what appropriate write-ups would be, and then let us talk with Tim and Hayden and get some idea. Because you will, as you know, as this process continues, you are going to ask to narrow, going to be asked by the legislature to narrow those down. And so we'll get feedback on where that direction is coming. We can, but what Senator Martin's office was clear of is they're also looking for policy ideas. So, you know, there's definitely room for some of these that may not be financial asks, but, you know, working with the legislature to coordinate with FPNL to provide, you know, underground utilities so that we're storm-ready and we're hardening facilities, and then making a priority to those gateway roads that, that are hurricane evacuation roads. So there's ways we can tie this in maybe, because I don't, we're not going to have a finalized price and some of these things aren't going to be shovel-ready, so there's going to be some tweaking that we need to work through these.
Okay.
I think I've got enough direction to...
Okay. We can move on to update on the financial or fiscal year.
Thank you. And we know you've had a long evening, so we can keep this fairly brief, but we, we did want to provide the opportunity for you to give any more feedback since your last budget hearing is, is coming quickly, September 17th.
Not even close to midnight yet. We've got...
Well, I will make it very, very quick. We do like to call to everyone's attention their opportunity to participate in our budget hearing. So tonight, we've already had our hearing. Our final budget hearing will be Wednesday, September 17th at 5:30. That will be our final budget hearing, including our mill rate vote. That'll be the final mill rate vote. I have a slide of our strategic priorities, just to remind everyone how the budget has been prioritized. State revenue projections, we received one additional revenue projection from the state, the communication services tax, again in line with our budget. We're in great shape. Local option fuel tax still not released, but we, we relied heavily on our historic trends and that hasn't moved very much. So again, we're very comfortable with those. We did want to, to provide you this slide. We know you had a mill rate vote earlier. You'll have one next meeting in two weeks, so wanted to, to restate those projections that we'd made for you with respect to real estate taxes and then open it up to discussions. One thing we wanted to point out is that in your city council packet for Banyan Tree splash pad, you did approve a, an addition to the budget, this preparatory budget for next year, the 25, 26. So staff will, based upon that approval, staff will, at the next meeting, present that being included in the budget. Your next budget draft will include that. So we wanted to open it up to any other discussions that y'all had.
Perfect, thank you.
Kim?
Yep. First of all, Lisa, when I tell everyone, when we talked a couple of meetings ago about franchise fees and communication taxes, she did a great job doing a comparison. If you could give a copy of that to everyone.
I think it was emailed.
Oh, you got it? Okay, well, I guess the biggest thing here is that we're, on the bottom half, we're at the bottom of these categories, and we've not made any conscious decision to change these over the years. But with a number of capital projects, with the potential, potential for financing of Burt and that type of stuff, I'd like to better understand our options to leverage some of this potential rate changes that would allow us to, to put more revenue in the coffer to help offset some of these upcoming expenses. So I guess essentially, I think it's communication services tax, if I understood what we talked about the other day, that is implemented on a January 1st, but it's got to be submitted in by September 1st for review. So that is not really an option for this budget year. And the only thing that we have to clarify on these, on the franchise fees for electric as to specifically what's the, what increments can you change that as a potential source? So if, if we can just follow up on that, that would be a big help.
Any other questions for Lisa? Comments? Nigel?
Yes, sir. Is now the time, and I apologize, there's a couple of things I've already looked at and staff and Lisa and staff have already reduced the budget as requested as appropriate for two of my boards. I didn't see any other boards that had budget decreases, and I think we had discussed the fact that there's a couple of boards that have substantially more money having to do with historic preservation, et cetera. When do we discuss reducing those or eliminating them?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, when, when do we discuss that? Because we've got...
We, there was a, okay, so we were going to do the BOGO event and we decided not to do that because there was something that the staff was going through the process of putting together so that it could be done in a more fluid manner.
My question is, let's get the fluidity out of it. When are we going to make that decision?
That's a, that's a separate issue, what I don't want you discussing. What, what council member had mentioned to me is that, for example, the Art and Public Places Board on their own made a recommendation to council to reduce some of their budget items. So the advisory boards are fully at the discretion of council, the funding of those. The question was, is that there are two separate line items, if I, if I'm correct, that the Historic Preservation Board oversees, one is... The question was, is that there are two separate line items, if I, if I'm correct, that the Historic Preservation Board oversees. One is the general operations of their, um, of their board, which is, allows them to do the living or the, the, um, preserving oral history, as well as the videos, certain bulletins, projects, maps, smaller projects the board does, similar to other, the tree board does the same sort of activities. And then a separate one is an actual grant program that they have, where they can authorize, uh, grant funding to certain historic structures. And so I think what I understood is, what I had said, is if there's a request from council members to reduce any of those line items, that would be a discussion for council. So, um, you have the right, of course, to bring that up anytime as an amendment to this proposal, or if you wanted to work further with staff and come with some suggestions, we can also bring that to the next meeting too, if you want us to, uh, look at that as well.
I know if they don't use it, it just goes back into the general.
Correct. If the, correct.
Have they been using it, and to what extent previously?
This, John?
Mr. Mayor, the, the Historic Preservation Board had one request for a grant last year for window replacement that, and I was in the meeting that was there, and that was, I believe, approved. Uh, I don't remember the dollar amount for that, though. It was a grant to the homeowners of that historical property. Uh, the second piece that, um, I was contacted in, in, um, this oral history thing, is one of the things that they have chartered Antonio to start to work on, is an oral history, specifically a tie-in of that Benita Springs Cemetery back into some of the, um, the legacy of Benita Springs, oral histories, that type of stuff. So, that's in progress. I don't think it's got enough, at this point, wraparound to say this is the scope as to what that is, but that's the two things that I'm aware of from a historical preservation standpoint.
Well, I guess what I'm asking you, how would you feel about taking a look at that and reducing it?
I'd have to find out more. I mean, quite honestly, from my end, everyone has spoke very receptive of doing more to preserve the, um, the Benita Springs Cemetery as, as a gateway to the city. Now, if the consensus is we really have stepping back from that, I think the tie-in and the forty-one odd veterans that are, that are buried there and so forth, that, I think that there is a certain component. I just don't know what that cost is, Nigel.
Just to clarify, when, when this was brought up as an initial, it wasn't, I, I don't want to say it's not to extenuate the cemetery, it was more as a an appropriate buffer, so that when people came into the city and they stopped at their first light, they weren't looking at a dilapidated graveyard.
Right.
And a billboard. So, it wasn't a, hey, we need to spend this money because we're going to make the gravesite the center or anything along those lines. It was more, hey, we're going to put this water thing here, knock down the billboard, and make this look more presentable.
Well, I'd have to get a sense as to what that is, so I don't have, I don't have the history on that, so.
I, I could just, these are actually two separate projects individually, that we probably need to look at holistically, so one was a gateway feature, removing the billboard and providing some sort of monument that actually honored veterans there, as well as a welcome, welcoming feature to the city. Separate of that, the historic board and the churches have been discussing the fact that there, that it, there is potential for historical resources within that cemetery as it is, original cemetery to the community. It might also help with some funding towards the gateway features and beautification to honor those, those features and maintenance. So, I think the two projects need to be looked so that they are compatible, so we don't have separate, um, competing interests as well, but I think they are, they do, they are complementary if we can look at the way to make them compatible.
And one thing that I would just caution everybody on, and I'm, there's maybe some other people who might remember this, but a long time ago, there was discussion with the people who actually own that, and they were trying to give it to us. And that was something that was like, okay, so no, we don't want it, so we don't want to be in the business of getting it, but about six years ago, maybe, when we discussed with the owners trying to make it look nicer, their response was like, hey, you guys can have it. And I think we were like, hold on, that's not exactly what we were talking about. So, just, for the historical context, for staff and everybody else, there, that was, I believe, our last contact with the owner on, on that, and their response was, you guys can have it, and I think that's.
The good part is, is that Antonio has broken the ice with the Baptist Church, uh, and that there is a meaningful dialogue. They do not want us to take over the cemetery.
Good. Okay, good.
Uh, and it, and it's something that, where we had virtually no communication, that all of a sudden it exists, so. Where that goes from here, I can't answer specifically, but that's basically the last update when I talked with Antonio a couple of weeks ago.
And it does look a lot better than it did three years ago.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, the other thing that I want to bring up, and she's never going to do it, I thought there was a discrepancy on the line item under, uh, our city manager, and, uh, my question to Lisa was, when is the last time we gave our city manager a raise?
Last year.
Five years, five years ago.
No. Was it five years?
Or more? I know you really want to answer this question, but when's the last time we gave you a raise?
Twenty-twenty-one.
I'm just saying, when is the appropriate time to do that? And I'm thinking sooner than later.
Today?
Second.
At this time, could I, I mean, we haven't done a lot of research, but could I put a dollar amount out for council to vote on?
Well, I think, I, I, I think we're all on the same page of what you're doing. I would just caution, is your dollar amount going to be enough, and is it based on comparable communities? Like, so if you've done enough research and you feel that it would be an offer that is comfortably going to make it, uh, so that we're, I want us to be more than competitive. So, if your number reflects that, then throw it on the table. If you need to do more research to ensure that the number reflects that, hold and do that.
Derek?
No, I was just going to point out that there's been a, there's been significant turnover in Lee County with managers, so it probably wouldn't hurt to, to look at what the, the studies have been done for Cape Coral, for Myers Beach, a couple others that have turned over recently, you could probably get a pretty good idea of those.
So, we should look at that.
Yeah.
And what about assistant city managers?
Well, but the more fundamental question is, is why has it taken four years?
It's five.
Or five years?
It should be part of.
What in the budget?
Let me share with you what I do know from making some telephone calls. Yes, um, people in her position with less responsibilities have gotten pay raises, although there, there is a way that we can find that out. The number that I was going to put out there is probably lower than it should be, but I want us to do something. That's my point.
If it's lower, then I would just hold it, and then let's come with a number that is appropriate, because I don't want to undershoot it.
So, let me offer something, and Mayor Council, if you would, it is coming time for my annual, I was going to make this clear as well, my annual evaluation. So, let me send out the evaluation, let me send out the contracts, everybody is working off of the same page. And then what I will share is, yes, I did, um, so that's completely transparent, I had asked for additional time, so you did afford me a five-year contract, because that was more important to me and my family at the time, as opposed to additional reviews of, of pay increases. What I would, at some point, like to, what we do is, the rest of staff is handled under an appropriation that you put into the budget that we do as far as, um, everyone is, is evaluated annually, and then it goes into effect in April. If you would like to make me consistent with staff, I'm, I'm happy to do that, and you can all review some additional, um, what other jurisdictions do, is they do surveys, and we can provide that information of similar, of the cities within our county, neighboring county, and then like-sized cities, so we can provide that to all of you.
So, Lisa, instead of using Fullick Consulting, um, who would you recommend? It took her a second to pick up on that.
We, with city staff at the direction of council, can easily obtain that information. We're, they were, other entities requested of us quite frequently, and we participate in all those surveys, so we have that data handy, so we could provide that back to you with respect to salary right now. But, um, and we can also, I think the staff raises have been at five percent, um, it's up to five percent based on performance, so those have been what's been happening historically, and that's, that's what's in our budget now to maintain that.
You a lot of budget amounts, so that the staff and managers can allocate that, um, annually, and then when we provide the budget update, we have, we have, um, provided so that you're able to afford those increases to staff annually.
When is the last time the five percent number was evaluated? Like, and what is that based on? Because, I mean, if it's, if it's not keeping up with inflation and/or it's not competitive with what other, other municipalities are doing, then what are we doing?
I, I think we, we look at it each year when we put it in the budget, and we feel it's very, um, competitive and comparable to other entities that we, we communicate with on a regular basis. And our salary ranges as well, um, as you all know, each year we increase the range itself, which is so important when you have long-term employees, which we love, you know, when people get our twenty-year award, fifty-year, fifteen-year award. When we can adjust their, um, salary range so that they don't max out of their range for, you know, doing the same great job, that's really the biggest thing, and y'all have allowed us to do that. We're so grateful for that.
When you adopt the actual salary range, then it gives the manager and myself the ability to increase the salary of the, of that individual, based on the range of where they are in their service to the city. So, when the five percent occurs in their annual evaluation, it's, it's included with that bump. So, that's how we've been able to provide an incentive to those longer-standing, um, employees.
And it's been great with retention and reward for.
One of the things we're concerned about previously is that we do have a policy within the handbook that if, um, if the employee exceeds their rate, their pay range, they're not able to be bumped, and that is, that is a problem, because that, that affects their FRS, that affects their retirement, and so we don't want to ever have that problem. We're not rewarding the longevity of those employees.
Okay, great.
So, have you got the direction you need at this point?
Will, will two weeks work for you, Lisa?
Yes, yes, for sure.
So, we'll have information for our next meeting. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you. The last item we have is the community development fees. I will keep this very brief. I think, I think I can handle this one, Jackie, as far as keeping up with community standards and our neighboring jurisdictions, as well as our comprehensive plan, it would be appropriate for us to get direction from council to bring back, um, additional data on the current fees we have, our neighboring jurisdictions, and then get direction regarding, you would require a consultant to look at the impact fees. I did want to reiterate, it does not require you to increase those impact fees, but we should be in good keeping and standing to, um, evaluate those, and I'll let Jackie add anything quickly, or John, that they want to add real quickly.
Can we just start that, or do we need a vote on doing it?
I would prefer, no, I would prefer a vote because we're going to have to fire, hire a consultant.
Yeah, for the record, Jacqueline Gensen, yeah, impact fees, we definitely have a consultant. Go ahead and prepare those, because there's strict statutory guidelines on those studies and how they're calculated. We'd be doing it both for roads and parks, because it has to be, um, a rational nexus for the establishment of those fees based on most current localized data. Um, so you definitely need a consultant to prepare those studies. For the planning and zoning fees, um, there, we haven't made changes since twenty-twenty-one, and even in twenty-twenty-one, they were very minimal. Um, we have adopted new policies, procedures, applications, that have no fees, because we have not updated the fee schedule.
Can we do a motion to, uh?
Direct staff to bring back information on the fee.
So moved.
Or hire the consultants.
But the, what I really want to touch on, though, is the building fees. So, because Senate Bill one-eighty has language in there where if we get a storm, and if it's within six months, we cannot increase building fees. So, that is definitely, definitely something that's more of a, more timely manner that, um, we as a department have some thoughts on what we can do right away.
I think what we're asking is that those, that, I think staff wanted to bring that proposal first, if you're comfortable with that, so that we can address that in time.
So, we can do that first, but at the same time, hire the consultant to do everything else?
Probably waived the fees last hurricane.
That's the motion?
Yes, it is.
Yes, second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to do that. Roll call.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick. Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
No.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one.
Um, I just have one other quick item that I need to bring up, is that I did receive correspondence from the Lee County School Board, um, Dr. Adam Malloy, regarding the use of two-seven-seven-three-three Horn Avenue. Um, if it's, this has previously been discussed by council, um, to allow them a temporary period to use a lot for construction purposes. Um, if it's desire of council, staff recommends you enter into an, an agreement that clearly defines the terms of the allowable timeframe, as well as potential, the needed screening for the residents, um, and then the condition of the lot post-agreement. So, we would need direction from you to do that. It would be the consideration of allowing the, the mayor to enter into an agreement, or, and/or your manager to enter an agreement.
Nigel?
Yeah, I think this would be a wonderful opportunity, not that I don't trust our folks at the Lee County School Board, but, um, there's a certain facade that they've committed to, but if we're going to let them use our lot, then I would just like something, language in there that it's part and parcel to that facade not being delayed, that it's part of the construction, and when the school opens, it's completed.
It's in phase one.
Whatever.
I think if we add additional, if you would just let us, uh, if you would like to go that direction, I think we should bring back something at the next meeting, and I can share that with Dr. Malloy.
Y'all okay with that? Questions for the neighbors?
Yeah, I'm just not voting now, because they treated us, so.
Okay.
Or, or charge them.
All right.
Can we do a fee?
D, hurricane recovery?
I, I, I think we've covered everything with the fees and items.
Okay, uh, Mayor and Councilmember reports. Amy?
Just a few things real quick. Um, I just first want to thank all the staff for their hard work in getting all the letters out to the residents of San Carlos Estates. And I, um, attended the landowners' meeting on August twenty-third, and the main purpose of the meeting was, um, to vote on the referendum House Bill four-zero-three-three. Um, the meeting had a very strong attendance, and, um, after a lot of inputs from the residents, the vote concluded with, I don't have exact numbers, but it was around three-hundred-and-sixty yeses and forty-seven no's, so, um, it did not want to go further with the city taking them over, so that, at this point, has ended, and hopefully gone to rest for a little bit. And also a reminder that the Benita Springs Fire Department's holding the Patriots Day Ceremony on Wednesday, September eleventh, at five-thirty at Reflections Park, which is located at Station One on Old Forty-One. Um, I am unfortunately not going to be able to attend, and will be out of town. And, yeah. Okay, you, you both will be attending? Okay, so, um.
I'll be there too.
I don't know how.
Well, normally, I, I would take it.
Right.
I, I will be out of town. I know, Nigel, you already emailed saying that you were going to be present, um, and since you already do our, uh,
Veterans.
Veterans, uh, you know, it's kind of similar, so.
Jesse, you're not going to be on. Okay, I'm happy to do it.
Yes?
I don't have anything. Thank you. Great meeting, staff, appreciate you.
Ditto.
Chris?
Just a shout-out of thanks to, uh, Adam Botana and Speaker Designate Garrison over the Critical Erosion designation for Benita Beach. Also, uh, Adam Botana, uh, shout-out to him for a very successful meeting with Florida DEP and, uh, Florida Forever. The boys at, uh, DEP and Florida Forever are scraping around, looking for money for the Burt project. The, uh, I, I guess you probably all got the, uh, email from Florida DOT that the, uh, US forty-one and Benita Beach Road PD and E study was completed, and I, that was, uh, done in the end of July, so I, I guess that's a big positive, Matt.
Yeah, that, that's a, a huge positive. I mean, it was complete with the meeting in April last year, but this is the acceptance of that finding, so it really does close it out. I can tell you that since July, they have been, they, being FDOT, is selecting designers for that project. That process will wrap up in November of this coming, well, this coming November. So, by November, you know, then they'll negotiate a contract and then, uh, move into the design phase.
And the feedback from the, uh, Wonder Gardens was that the, uh, reception for the opening of the Otters exhibit was a great success, so that's all I have to report.
And the baby alligators.
And the baby alligators.
Derek, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I, I, I need to, uh, ask something of one of the seven of you. So, we have, if you recall, we had the Dean Street RPD consideration a couple of months ago.
Yep.
Uh, there was a filing of a Florida, under the Florida Land Use Environmental Dispute Resolution, it's a mandatory mediation and arbitration process. For that, we have a mediation scheduled for September twelfth. I wanted to see if I could, if I could impose upon one of you, uh, one victim, to attend on the city's behalf to, uh, consider any proposals that are, that are discussed during the mediation process. It would be.
Is that Zoom?
Uh, it could be. It could be a Zoom, necessary.
Day of the week is that, Derek?
Friday.
Friday. Is, do we have, is there any other meeting, like MPO?
If, if the, um, no, there's no MPO on that Friday. If the, if the mediation is not successful, then we will have a formal hearing before a special magistrate, that the city's retained, and that'll be sometime in October. But right now, we're going to have at least one mediation. But right now, we're going to have at least one mediation and we do want to have somebody delegated to relay the, the discussions back to the city council.
And it'll be where?
It'll probably be here.
I could do it.
Okay. Oh, it's lots of thought.
I know. My, my turn in the barrel.
Well, it gives you a chance that you catch up on your email.
My report, right? I don't have a report. What I do is I did call Adam Botana to thank him. And, uh, because I'm still amazed that you got that beach, that, that was a, everybody said no-go, so congratulations. And he did do a lot of good work. But Adam Botana said something and I said, can I share this with council tonight? We were talking about how things are going and this is a quote. "You guys have such a great council, it's the best since I was born here." And he actually said that we have, and he used the term great. I said, good. He said, you've got a great mayor and a great council. So I thought, we have a good mayor and a great council. But, um, I thought, we all know Adam, that it was real praise and, and it, it tells you what we're doing up here. So kudos to all of you. And then staff, what a phenomenal job as far as getting us ready for these, uh, budget meetings. And thank you for your patience. Don't be mad at me.
Jim?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Um, well, as for me, um, I attended the Otter, uh, grand opening along with the baby alligators and it was a very good event, uh, well-attended and, uh, it's, it's a much nicer, uh, exhibit than the previous Otter exhibit, so.
Unfortunately, I had COVID.
That's a good thing. And then I also attended a, a grand opening of a new medical dispensary in, in the city.
Colored leaf.
It, it just made me think of, uh, all the discussion we had when, uh, we talked about approving that years ago. I, I'd never been in one. I don't have my medical card. Um, but at the time, I'd driven all the way up to Fort Myers just to kind of look in the windows to see what it was at the time. And, you know, I saw it was really no big deal and, and I'm glad that we took the steps forward to, uh, allow them in the city. And, um, as a visitor, I got to go into this one and it's like going in the Apple Store. I mean, it's, I, I have no idea what any, anybody's worried for ahead of us, so.
Did you inhale?
Did they have goodie bags? I wasn't invited. If they had goodie bags, I would.
If, if you had a medical card, you could, yeah, they, they were giving out stuff, so. Um, but, um, yeah, that, that's all I have. And, uh, is there a motion to, oh, is there any public comment? If there's any public still left, I'm looking at, uh, Mr. Kyle over there.
Anybody waiting?
Everybody stand up though, get shot.
Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, motion to adjourn.
Kyle is.